Starting on page 39 is the Development of Property Report. And item number one is the Official Plan Amendment Number 25. And with us in meeting today is Mr. Cheeseman. And we're going to tag team this one a little bit. So I'm going to share my screen with your indulgence, Warden. And Charles will walk you through a PowerPoint if I so may. So let me just pull that up. And I'll cue Charles.
Can people hear me? Great. Thank you, Madam Warden, members of County Council. And I'm here to present Official Plan Amendment Number 25. This is the incredible journey we've been on for about nine years. It's come to an end, and I want to review the modifications. These are the changes that the ministry has made to our adopted OPA 25. This is a condensed PowerPoint. There is a longer one, which we will send to all the municipalities later today. Craig, if you could go to the first page, thank you. Just a bit of a brief timeline. April 25th, 2018, we adopted, County Council adopted OPA 25. Some members will remember our meeting up in Toronto on November 9th, where we met very senior officials from the ministry and were advised that the upcoming PPS changes were going to be flexible and more maze than shells and creative solutions. There was talk of that they agreed with our philosophy, that they would work towards flexibility. And unfortunately, that didn't pan out in the final PPS, but we did give it the old college try. March 22nd, 2019, the partial approval by MMAH. And so that was somewhat based on our earlier meeting, where they did agree to put a hold on some of the contentious issues we have with the province. So we at least got a partial approval. And the expectation is we would work forward on addressing those non-decision areas when a new PPS came into effect, Provincial Policy Statement, in the hopes that it would be more amenable to rural Ontario. February 28th, just a few months ago, that 2020 PPS was approved. And on March 26th, 2020, we got final approval from the ministry on OPA 25. And I'm just going to, before we go to the next slide, or you can stay at this slide, Craig, just very briefly. The provincial interests are the matters that the minister is dealing with in our official plan. And I was just going to suggest that wherever people are on their Zoom call, whether they're in their house looking out the window or wherever on the back deck or something like that, and you look out the window, you will look on this landscape, and you can just see the provincial interest by quickly just looking out your window or looking out your back deck. And if you're on the waterfront, you're going to be dealing with things like fish habitat, protection of surface water quality, archaeology, could be an at-capacity lake or flood hazards. If you're in a more forested area, you'd be looking at a provincial interest like significant woodland, wildland fires, or significant wildlife habitat, which is the deer wintering yards. Farming area, prime agriculture, that's a major provincial interest. In more rural areas, gravel pits and quarries. And if you're in town, servicing, infrastructure, growth management, housing. The list goes on and on. And as you can tell from that list, we have all of those in abundance here in Renford County. And our address to the ministry for years has always been that the province is looking at Renford County with the same pair of glasses that they look at the Greater Golden Horseshoe, which is expected to increase by about 3 million people or 4 million people in the next 20 years. We won't be expecting that kind of growth. So what we did with OPA 25 was to consider these provincial policy issues, but add context and discernment to the issues in Renford County and hope to get some flexibility in our plan that may not meet the test of the Greater Golden Horseshoe, but are applicable to the county of Renford. And as you'll see through my presentation, we weren't successful, completely successful in that regard. So Craig, if you wanted to go to the first slide. This is our consent policy. This is probably one of the most contentious issue. And we were actually able to keep this policy. This was one we didn't expect to get success on. The reason for it is the provincial policy statement was updated to allow lot creation that is locally appropriate. And as a result, we were able to keep our consent policy. I would just make a little comment as I, before I go forward, that the NHL season may be opening up. And if this was a hockey scenario, this would be like Toronto going to Boston and scoring the first goal and thinking that, boy, we're off to, we're going to win the Stanley Cup. Unfortunately, the next set of slides are all Boston. They came back and they scored many, many goals. So this was really our only, I think, one of our only major successes. Craig, the next slide, growth allocations. I'll just say a brief word about this. We put population projections in our OPA 25, the adopted copy. The province wanted to consider those as allocations. And that's in fact what they have done with those numbers. So the implications for implementation considerations. Any exceedance of these projection figures would require an official plan amendment. So if a municipality went above its number, they would need an OPA. And as we've said before, that if we exceeded growth in Renford County, it's a cause for celebration, not an official plan amendment. And it could affect new development, like a plan of subdivision. It could be hindered by these numbers. If the municipality's already exceeded its growth or allocation, a new subdivision may have some trouble getting through. So that's a concern to us. Next one, Craig, please. Protection of natural heritage features, primarily endangered and threatened species, and the significant wildlife habitat, which are the deer wintering areas. And we did not want to map those deer wintering areas, which we did not do in our adopted copy. And I know there's one member of council who's very aware of this issue going back some 25 years. And we're back to the future. And the province modification is they have added the deer wintering areas to the Schedule B Natural Heritage. And basically, development are within or adjacent to significant wildlife habitat will require an environmental impact study. But I have a bit of news on an EIS a little later that helps temper that somewhat. Craig, next one, please. Prime agricultural areas. The province wanted us to add additional areas for prime agriculture. McNabb, Braysite, Horton, North Agona, Wilberforce, Bonnershire Valley, Amistad Bromley, Greater Nanawaska. A number of municipalities passed resolutions opposing the inclusion of these additional areas. The ministry went ahead and added those notwithstanding. The implication is that the areas covered by these policies will be, the agriculture resource will be protected, but it will prohibit residential severances other than the surplus dwelling. And I have a map a little later to illustrate that. Craig, please. Oops, aggregate. What we did when we prepared the adopted official plan amendment, we took off aggregate resources where they were near residential clusters and waterfront areas. The ministry said you can't do that unless you support it by a study. That's the background. And the modification is they have added a sand and gravel constraint layer to Schedule B Map 3. And lands covered on this schedule will be the subject to a further constraint on development. And I will have a map illustrating that as well. Next slide, please, Craig. Carst topography. This is limestone. And the issue here is potential sinkholes and things like that. The ministry had wanted us to do a desktop evaluation and site visit by a geoscientist as a very first step in determining carst. We've been using the carst protocol the last 10 years in the county, which is where an applicant digs three boreholes. The chief building official checks it. And if there's enough, one meter of in-situ material, we don't worry about it. The province has said that was not enough. And the policy has been modified to require that desktop study and site visit as a first step. And what are the implementation considerations? It will increase the cost to applicants. In subsequent phases, if there is carst identified, the province has added more policies and more prescriptions as well to those subsequent steps. So that's also for consideration. Environmental impact study requirement. The ministry wanted us to ensure appropriate level of analysis is undertaken to demonstrate no negative impact on natural heritage features. They are now requiring any development would require EIS within or adjacent to significant wildlife habitat, fish habitat, significant woodland, or significant valley land. And this will add cost to proponents. The one thing that they did do with the EIS requirement is there are policy now does provide for scoping the environmental impact study to the scale of development. So you don't have to do a huge study for a small study and a possibility of waiving a study altogether if, for example, the impact is or the development is minor. Great, please. One issue that we had with the ministry was this definition of reserve sewage system capacity. The provincial policy statement says lot creation is only permitted if there's sufficient reserve sewage capacity. And we wanted confirmation that that included the land application of SEPTAGE to ministry-approved sites. And that's how SEPTAGE is handled here in Renford County. Now, in their modification, there was no reference to land application on approved sites. So we have asked the ministry to review that policy. So in completing my hockey analogy, the score is 6 to 1 for Boston. And this issue is under a video review. And I'm hoping we're going to get a favorable call on this, but it's still, it's still up for discussion. And we'll wait on that. Very important issue, this number eight, I can't underestimate. Next one, Paul, or pardon me, Craig. Couple of issues that weren't on our original chart with the province, but were always in the background. These are some big ones here. So these are additional modifications of March 26. Scope and structure. The ministry in conversations had wanted us to make our, wanted revision so that local municipal development would have regard to upper-tier policies and that what we call lower-tier plans or local plans will conform to upper-tier plans. And this is to reflect the Planning Act. So one of the modifications is they put in here the policies of this plan. And I've just added IE County Plan, as well as the policies local official plans shall apply. What that means for implementation? Planning Act applications for development covered by local plans like Deep River, Petawawa, Renford, Armpryor, and Laurentian Valley will have to be reviewed against County OP policies and local plans. In the old days, we just looked at the local plan and we're done with it. And any updates to local plans will have to conform to all the policies of the County OP. Next slide, Craig, please. Urban community designation. This applies to the towns of Armpryor, Renford, Petawawa, Deep River. And it's a designation of the County OP. And all it did was outline the general policies. It would be included in local plans, but the local plans applied. That's been changed now. The province has expanded the list of policies. And they are saying that updates to local plan and new development in the urban communities designation will have to conform to all the relevant policies in the county plan. So that builds on the scope and structure. And that's basically us as planners now looking at two official plans potentially for each development. And anybody wanting to do development will have to look at the local plan and the County OP as well. Next slide, please, Craig. Laurentian Valley, that's a new section that was added to, under OPA 25. Previously, Laurentian Valley was not part of the original County OP. What County Council had proposed in OPA 25 is to treat Laurentian Valley like the Armpryor, Renford, Deep River, and Petawawa, where you would have your own local plan, and that's all that would apply. That's changed now. Laurentian Valley will now be like the urban communities. That the county plan will also apply to development in Laurentian Valley. That's caused some issues with the township when it comes to policies of a local nature that may be different in their plan than our plan. And the province also added a Schedule Map 5. They've called Laurentian Valley. Laurentian Valley was added to the county plan, which forms the basis for the township's future primagaries. So they've identified in the county plan agriculture lands that Laurentian Valley will have to consider when they do their update. Next slide, please. Cultural heritage, archaeological resources. In our adopted OPA, we had said that for waterfront development, where this mainly applies, plans a subdivision and more than three lots would have to do an archaeology study. The province removed that reference with the implementation consideration being that an archaeological assessment would be required for all waterfront development, including single-lot severances. So we were looking to trigger that arc study a little later, more than just one lot, but that was not approved by the province. Next slide, please. Protection of natural shoreline buffer in the Muskrat Indian Westmeath watershed. So in the background, and completely separate from the county efforts, various groups and individuals have been lobbying the provincial government to address the water quality of Muskrat Lake, which I'm sure you're all aware is an at-capacity lake and has concerns for oversupply of phosphorus. And what the province ended up doing is added policies related to all surface water features and permanently flowing municipal drains in the three watersheds outside of Whitewater Legion Township. So this would apply to Laurentian Valley and Amistad Bromley, and I think North Agona, Wilberforce. So when we're doing development in those areas, we will have to consider the policies that are in place to protect Muskrat Lake, which is in another township. These policies are primarily aimed at Planning Act applications. This is another to be determined. We've asked the province for more clarification as to how they want this implemented. Next item, please. Wildland fire. These are the areas subject to wildland fires. And we show those on Schedule B Map on Hazards Map. What the province did is modify the policy that we had in place. And the modification says that development shall generally be directed to areas outside of these areas. But development may be permitted if they meet certain protocols. And I think that the implementation considerations will be, new development may require more analysis, and there will be an emphasis on mitigation measures. Next slide, please, Craig. So what I want to do with this slide is just introduce, I'm going to show some maps. And I'm going to look at agriculture and significant wildland, significant wildlife, deer wintering areas. I'm also going to show you the sand and gravel constraint layer and how it works. And I would just point out that one other map change was that Diamond Lake is an at-capacity lake. And Bark Lake, Carson Lake, and Trout Lake is also now a near-capacity lake. And all of these are in Nanawaska Valley Township. And this will have an effect on new development on these lakes. Next slide, Craig. So this is one of the maps, a series of maps. The area that's in the crosshatching red, these are lands that have been added to the agriculture designation in Horton Township. And Councillor Bennett will know the history of this. And this is the sort of south part of the township. There's more in the northern portion as well. The, we agreed to put the agriculture designation in Horton, but on a more restricted amount than the province wanted. They've come back and they have filled up these additional lands with agriculture. So that is now in effect. Next slide, Craig, please. North Agona, Wilberforce was another area where there was a small clump of agriculture lands in the northeast of the township. The province wanted to add more. I know that the township objected to that. Notwithstanding, these additional lands have now been designated agriculture in North Agona, Wilberforce. And again, there's other areas of the township that were affected, but I'm only showing you this slide for the purposes of this morning. Next slide, Craig. Natural heritage features. This map is showing a lot of the natural heritage features, woodlands, valley lands, and so forth, to the east of the county. The yellow you see in the west of the county are the, what they call significant wildlife habitat. That is the deer wintering areas. And if you could go to the next slide, Craig, please. I zeroed in on one municipality, just, I just picked it out of the many. Killaloo, Hagueney, Richards is basically all covered in this deer wintering area. And what the policies say is that if you're in or adjacent to those, you need to do an environmental impact study. And I think what we're going to do, there is that flexible provision in the environmental impact study policy in the plan. We'll have to see how we can work with that policy so that we're not, you know, the interest is not to require a study for every single thing that goes on. We'll have to, we'll have to work through that. And I'm sure that would be the wishes of the township and county councils. Next slide, Craig. I'm also in Killaloo, Hagueney, Richards. This is on Round Lake Road and Red Rock Road. And all this is showing is, and Round Lake is, that's the Schedule A to the official plan. That's the rural designation in the white area. And that's, that's all well and good. The next slide, though, they introduced the sand and gravel constraint layer. And that's that toning that you see at the bottom towards Round Lake. And that's this area that we wanted removed because it's on waterfront. It's in residential areas. It did not make sense to have a constraint layer of sand and gravel there. I know it's a county road, and we might be able to get some gravel from there. But it is what it is, and we didn't think that was appropriate. But the, the province has created this sand and gravel constraint layer, which was something new to us. And it's now in effect, and we have to consider it when we look at development. And just one final slide is Petawawa. And again, this sand and gravel layer is shown in Petawawa. That's the Petawawa sand plain. The problem is, not the problem, the great thing is, that's all developed. And again, that constraint layer on a developed area doesn't have a lot of, it just doesn't have a lot of application. So we will need to talk to the province about some of this. And I've asked the province to look at this issue as well, as many of the other ones that I've already mentioned. And just the final slide, Craig. Where do we go here? Next steps. I think there's later in the report, we would seek exemption status from the province for OPA approval. The county has approved about, we've had about 27, 28 amendments to the County OP over the years. They all require approval by the province. They now cost $12,000. If we get this exemption status, which we're pretty sure of getting because we have an updated plan that's consistent with the PPS, we will no longer need to get approval from the, an OPA passed by County Council. It would come into effect provided there are no appeals. And that would save a lot of time and a lot of money. And the other next step would be to begin updates to municipal conference of zoning bylaws. Many of these are out of date. Some of them have not been consolidated as a result of amalgamation. And now with the OP in effect, there are a number of projects that need to be updated and get these cleaned up and ready to go. So, Madam Warden, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Cheeseman. I know a year ago, this is not the kind of report that you were hoping to bring to council. I definitely want to acknowledge all of the work that you and your staff have put into this. We had a number of open houses over the last 18 months. We heard from our residents, and we tried very, very hard to have our OP reflect the needs of the residents of Renford County. With that, I will open up to questions. Councillor Visnuski Moore. Councillor, you have to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Now, can you hear me?
That's it, perfect.
Thank you, technology. Okay, Charles, my question is, the applications that were in prior for development to the OP taking place, are they going to be honored with the old system? Do they have to comply with all these new regulations? And secondly, what about those that were in the works and were very close to getting to the point of development? And now, you know, they're going to be told they have to redo everything and do a lot more work, meeting these OP requirements? So my first one is, will the, those that have applied be exempted for the new OP stuff that's coming through? And those that were in the works, even if they hadn't actually paid the money, if those can be exempted? And what we have to do to try to get that in place?
For you. So the answer to the first question is, they would not be covered by the new OP. Anything, any Planning Act application before March 26 is free and clear. In terms of files that are in the works, the answer, simple answer unfortunately, is they will be covered. Because the Planning Act says it's got to be an application under the Planning Act. And unfortunately, anybody who may have been considering development if they did not submit the actual application before March 26 is going to be covered by the new official plan. And I, it's a state of affairs that I'm not pleased with. I will say that we were hoping to get some point of a heads-up from the province that this was coming down. And we were as surprised as anybody that it came when it came. And it came into effect, that approval, on March 26. And anything after that date in terms of an application will be covered under the new OP. And anybody kicking tires before that, unfortunately, we can't, we can't consider them under the old official plan.
Councillor Visnuski Moore.
Just to follow up then, but isn't that unfortunate? If the people were, you know, whoever had applied were going through the process and, you know, your office said, okay, you need to dot the i's there and you need to do this. And now, all of a sudden, they won't meet that date because of the information going back and forth. So if, Charles, if I was applying and I had gone through the process, and then you were telling me, Janice, you need to go back and get a copy of this picture and that, and this and that. So we were going through a heavy process, and we were working on it for some time. And basically, it's nobody's fault, but the process then slowed the process down. And now, these people did not get that application, even though they were this close to getting it there. They're going to be penalized. Is there no way that we can exempt those that your office knows? I'm not saying somebody that now phones and says, oh yeah, I was doing it at home on my own. But if, if the planning office was working with individuals and were this close to getting it into the application stage, why could we not exempt it?
Good question. One issue is that there's some people who may have been working on a file that we weren't aware of. And for the ones that we were aware of, we didn't know when that this March 26 was going to become the date. And I think we felt that, how do we determine who was a legitimate considering development and who wasn't? And we'd almost have to treat anybody that contacted our office before March 26. We might have to give them a pass. And so it's defining who we allow through and who we don't. And we could get ourselves into some trouble. And if a file went to the local planning appeal tribunal and was being covered under an old official plan when the new one applied, we could be in some difficulties at ALPAC. And I think it was just a case, it was going to take us down some, some, a lot of problems trying to sort out who we let through and who we don't. Because I think that's the nature of the discussion. And I think we had to hold to the March 26 date, which is the, the law of Ontario is, when you apply for a Planning Act application, what official plan is in effect at the time?
Councillor Visnuski Moore.
Thank you, Warden, for allowing me the questions. I understand what you're saying, Charles, but some of them were at the P. Your office would know which of those are, were next. You know, if I called you and said, I'm thinking about it, and hadn't done any paperwork, and hadn't done, I can see you saying no. But those that are that close, Charles, I think your office could determine that. I'm really disappointed that we wouldn't consider exempting them. And I, I don't know how many you'd have in your office. I wouldn't imagine there'd be that many. But I asked that you reconsider that those that were very close, that they be granted a pass. And not all of them, I understand. If you didn't have, you know, an application in the works that was close to completion for admission, I understand that. But those that were close, I think you should reconsider. Thank you, Madam Warden, for allowing me the question.
Thank you for your comments. Councillor Hunt.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through you to Mr. Cheeseman. I see this as having a major impact on development in majority of our areas. And I'm wondering, we spoke earlier about communication. I'm wondering if there's a plan for the county to meet with lower-tier staff, either planners or staff that fulfill the role of a planner, to produce communication, you know, for our developers, to show the major changes that are coming here and the effect that it's going to have. So that throughout the county, we're going out with a consistent message, but also that it helps our lower-tier staff fully understand the changes that are out there and the effect it's going to have on developers so we can go out and work with them.
So, very, very good question. We've done some work already. We've sent a copy of the official plan to all municipalities with a three-page letter outlining the major modifications. I'm going to follow it up with this PowerPoint presentation. And we had a Zoom call about two weeks ago with our planners group from Renford County, which represents a number of the municipalities, not all of them. And I did go through a number of these changes. But perhaps the director and I can do some strategizing about how we want to roll a better, a better way of out for everybody, whether we do it through Zoom at a later date and I go through some of these changes in more detail. We can work on a, on a plan for that. And perhaps that will, that will help municipalities. With respect to developers and proponents and applicants, we can think about that. I don't know the best way to deliver that. But we can, we're certainly making the message clear unfortunately as people knock on our door. But a more robust strategy, we could give that some consideration too. And we'll, I'll chat with the director about doing that.
Follow-up, Councillor Hunt.
Yes, well, I certainly would appreciate that. And I'm sure all the other mayors and reeves would as well. Because it would be unfortunate if the lower tier has to try to get up to speed with the knowledge that is already possessed at the county level. So we would appreciate anything you could do So, we would appreciate anything you could do to make the job a little easier on the lower tier. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hunt. Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you, thanks for the presentation, Charles. But this is unacceptable on so many levels. I don't even know where to begin. But I will begin with the province bringing this down during a state of emergency in the province of Ontario. During a pandemic, you know, some of our people, as, as Counselor Visneski Moore pointed out, maybe it was a timing thing of trying to, you know, cross the Ts and dot the i's. I don't believe that we should stop lobbying for the changes that we need because we are being painted with the City of Toronto brush. So, I don't know, you know, we spent so much time on this file. I, I believe we did all the right things in speaking with the Parliamentary Assistant for the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. I, I think that it's incumbent upon us to continue to lobby the province. And I'm assuming everybody read the resolution that my council sent to at least extend the timing of some of these applications. This is, in my opinion, this is completely unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Lynch, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Charles, I know the county of Renfrew can't be the only county that's got these kinds of problems. I'm thinking like Thunder Bay up north, whatever. Have you made contact with them to get their opinions or support or what they've had problems with? Thank you.
No, I haven't, although I am aware of the situation in other areas. We are, we had a situation in Renfrew County where we had a county OP, which was a local official plan essentially. And those that did not want to be a part of it had their own plan. And that worked for a long time. But the province is now bringing everybody into a position across the province where you have a upper tier plan and you have lower tier plans feeding into it. And that is the, the model on the Planning Act and the PPS. And they've now imposed it on us. One of the challenges is that they've imposed this regional-wide voice in our official plan. But the official plan was always developed as a local plan. And the meshing, it hasn't meshed together as well as it should. But if I called my other colleagues, they would say, Charles, this is the way it's being done in the province. And, and in fact, in, in the GTA, you've got local plans, upper tier plans and growth plans. You've got three levels of plans. We've tried to keep that at bay. But this is, fortunately, this is the way the province is going. And they're now bringing it onto us. And it's, it's affecting the way we used to do, how we're used to doing business.
Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Warden. May I suggest that since you are doing a virtual Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus meeting, that perhaps you speak to this with some of our eastern colleagues?
I can certainly add that to our, our agenda and speaking points on Friday, for sure. Thank you for that suggestion. Counselor Love?
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'm wondering if Mr. Cheeseman could identify if the growth allocations are effective as of March 20, I think it was the 26th, or will projects that have been underway, such as the subdivision that he's well aware of, Chippewa Shores, will the numbers in that subdivision count towards Mattawaska Valley's growth allocation? Because we might as well shut the place down now because we're pretty much done.
That's a great question. I would assume, and I'm going to check on this one. But I would think that if it's an application in before March 26, the growth allocation would not apply. But if you like, I can follow that up with MMAH or just, just confirm that. But I'm, that would be my, my suggestion would be that it would not apply.
Counselor Love?
I, I certainly hope it doesn't. I really don't understand why Renfrew County would engage in economic development if our goal is to expand our population. And now, we've been put in a position where there are large areas of this county that will not be able to grow, no matter what we do. So, if we don't fight this, if we don't continue to, to press, saying this is just not acceptable for a rural municipality of the size of Renfrew County, I don't see how we're going to survive. We need to grow to be able to survive. And I'm at a complete loss. I, I'm just so frustrated with this at this point. So, anything we can do, anything that the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus can do, I am game to support us continuing to lobby and fight to ensure that many of these issues that we're facing, such as deer wintering yards, that these aren't putting us in a position where we can't grow. And we're, in the end, we're not going to survive because we can't grow our tax base or our businesses. Thank you.
Like a Counselor Love, very well said. Counselor Emo, did you have your hand up?
Yes, yes, I did, Warden. Thank you. Just a couple of points. My understanding, Charles, is that should a growth allocation prove to be inadequate, and I'm sure they all will be, that we can make a, an application for an official plan amendment to get those changed? Is that, is that my understanding? Is that correct? And secondly, then, my impression is the county is the granting authority for that? That subject to review by the, by the province?
My answer to that question would be, if, if a municipality needs to do an OPA to increase the growth allocation, it would be an amendment to the OP. And I would hope that because OPAs are exempt, we wouldn't have to get the blessing of the province.
Great. Okay, thank you. And if I might, Warden, secondly, would it be a benefit to us to take time to study bundling together zoning requests? And then forward them to the Minister for a ministerial zoning order? I understand he's turned up about eight or nine of them in the last year, coincidentally in Toronto. But I think if we're, you know, it's been noted, if we're, if we are being seen through that lens, maybe we should start using some of their, some of their tools that are being used quite effectively in the, in the metropolitan Toronto area. So, I'm, I'm curious about the application of ministerial zoning orders.
I'm not familiar with the zoning orders for Toronto. A zoning order is different from a zoning bylaw amendment. I think a zoning order is the minister makes a decision that's a little bit extraordinary using his power. Whether they would use that to approve all our updated zoning bylaws, I, I don't think that's the process. I can explore that if you want, but I'm not sure it's the process.
And, and I'm sure it's not the process, but I, I would be delighted to help the province straighten out their process. And the minister has shown an appetite for using that tool. And I'm sure he'd be glad to expand it to include us.
As always, Counselor Emo, right to the point. And I definitely, as we're going on through this discussion, we are getting a lot of information. We'll have a strategy in place. I think that the committee meeting for DNP in June will be very entertaining, to say the least. Any other further questions? Counselor Visneski Moore? Turn on your mic, please.
Thank you, Debbie. I'm so sorry. I keep forgetting that, Madam Warden. Just to the point that, Charles, I appreciate that you put Killu Hegarty and Richards up when you were in your initial, starting your presentation. It scared the heck out of me. It's all deer yard. It looks like we must have 10,000 deer in KHNR. But that sure does stop development. And you, and I guess I'm just echoing what my fellow councillors have spoken. This will shut us down for development, absolutely. And it scares me. And so, I too want to just add my voice that we need to continue to lobby, as Counselor Love has indicated, to tell them that this will shut us down. And, and Madam Warden, I do appreciate that you'll take that forward to the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. Sometimes they don't understand the, the implications of just the change and with a pen, what it does to the economic development. And I don't know who spoke to it, I guess, Counselor Love. Why bother getting an economic plan in place when basically that OP is going to shut us down for development? So, I want to add my name to the objection. And I hope that also that the planning department will reconsider about allowing those applications. Just to echo that again, Madam Warden, so it's not lost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bros?
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden. I want to add my name as well to the objection to what I see as basically this unacceptable plan. And I echo the voices of the other mayors that it's going to shut down development in our rural municipalities. I mean, our municipality is now covered, I would say, almost two-thirds by agriculture land that was never included before. And having traveled a lot of those areas, it's marginal at best. And yet, the province, just by, once again, the stroke of a pen or a marker on a map, indicates that this is now agricultural land. And it just, once again, stifles any opportunity for further development in our rural municipalities. Once again, this comes after the Ford government has repeatedly said over and over, we're here for rural Ontario. Well, this certainly flies in the face of their claim that they're here for us when in fact, it's shutting down any possible development. Not to mention the planners, that'll be out of a job because they'll have nothing to work on.
All right. Thank you very much for those comments, Counselor Bros. And I think that every person sitting here today supports that position. It is totally unacceptable. And we are going to have to fight for rural Ontario, for Renfrew County and for our residents and the future of our municipalities. Counselor Love, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think the other thing, it was mentioned about the county educating our staff. How are we going to educate our populace? Because we are going to get such a lashback at our, our individual municipalities. What do you mean, I have to do this study? What do you mean, I can't develop my property? Or I'm, I'm facing all these roadblocks? Or I, I want to sever my lot on water and now I have to do an archaeological study? So, to me, it is also really important that we educate the, the populace of Renfrew County in what it is we've received back, that this was not what county council agreed to and sent to the province. This is what we've received back and we are working hard to, to get some change. But in this, in the meantime, we are going to be facing a lot of angry people who are going to be in the position that Mayor Visneski Moore mentioned, where they were in the process but haven't actually got the application in place, but they have plans. And those that are thinking of plans, being faced with these new obligations for studies and restrictions, this isn't our, we didn't cause this to happen this way. So, I really don't feel that as a municipality and as a mayor, I don't want to take the flak for this. And I certainly don't want my staff to take the flak. And, and I honestly don't think the county staff should take the flak either. We tried very hard. But let's educate our populace. How are we going to do that?
Absolutely agree with you, Counselor Love. And I think that communicating to our, our residents is essential now. I, the, you know, shoot the messenger kind of thing isn't, isn't acceptable here. We have to make sure that all of our residents, in particular, all of those hundreds of people that showed up at open houses to realize that we were speaking on their behalf. And we weren't heard at Queen's Park, but we still have a voice, a strong one. I saw Counselor Murphy's hand, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just to jump off of what Counselor Love just said. So, even if we get these growth allocations sorted out, which would be lovely, what happens when somebody goes to develop and finds out that they need, you know, $50,000 worth of, of testing for various things like aggregate or the Endangered Species Act or CARST? So, you know, that, that in itself would stop me from developing if before I even dig a hole in the ground, I have to do thousands and thousands of dollars worth of tests. This, again, this is unacceptable. And I think it's incumbent upon all of us to let the province know that we will not, we are not in agreement with this. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Counselor Donoghue?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And certainly, in deference to the county council, I will keep a calm demeanor. But make no mistake, I'm seething at this intolerable act of the province. That this has been, been approved, as Counselor Murphy has indicated, nine days after an emergency was declared in the province of Ontario, with an enormous impact to us here and our residents, certainly in the county of Renfrew, is absolutely absurd, which is not to diminish had this been imposed upon us at any time of the year, let alone in the midst of a pandemic, it remains just as intolerable. What it does certainly is brings into disrepute the notion of planning. I am certainly or had through the process advocated and endorsed and still do believe in the appropriateness of planning. But it seems that all interests were considered in the development towards approval of this, except ours. In, in picking up the point with respect to, to the disregard for, for our local interest, Mr. Cheeseman had identified the lands along Round Lake and in fact, I guess, the entire town of Patowawa as, as, but for the development that currently exists would not be developable. So, my takeaway from that would be certainly that I witnessed as a member of the farming community some years ago, ultimately led towards people that would not otherwise be doing things on their property. Now is the time to do that. If, if there is the potential that you may be restricted from doing something on your property that you have no intention of doing, i.e., in the city of Ottawa, there were farms that got clear cut because there was a concern, a grave concern, that moving forward, this was going to be restricted. I am at a loss to understand. I certainly endorse the notion, the concept of species at risk. It seems absurd to consider deer as a species at risk. In fact, I guess what I would certainly advocate is that all members of our community immediately cease feeding the deer in, as a consequence of now having this. I also would repudiate, if, if we are going to use the hockey analogy as Mr. Cheeseman has suggested. In fact, this is not Boston and Toronto. This is the Stanley Cup-winning St. Louis Blues facing off against the, the Tim Hortons, Timbits novice team. It is absolutely steamrolling over everything that we had put forward, which were absolutely reasonable. I cite as an example the CARST policy, which is an exceptionally elegant solution that recognizes the low-density development that we have here. These are not costs that are going to cause developers, and developers being any one of us that has severable property. This is not going to be something that will, will cost us more money now. It will absolutely impair and impede the likelihood of us moving forward with these, these studies. It is absurd. It continues to creep with the species at risk. It has now been downloaded upon, basically, every landowner, I guess, in the province is going to have either a species or a habitat for a species at risk. So, that's a convenient method of downloading upon all of us property owners, the responsibility of mapping the entire province. I will certainly, as both a farmer and the mayor of, of the community with the second most farmland, after certainly Cathy Rigueur representing Whitewater Region, that in fact, also in downloading upon us, the, the public good of conserving farmland, they have conveniently also downloaded upon us the cost of preserving that farmland for those who do not have farmland. That would be, I assume, those many, many non-tillable acres that are now covered with concrete or asphalt. So, as a consequence of one time receiving the, the subsidy from the province for the 25% tax rate on farmland, we now receive exactly nothing. So, in fact, all of these things are preserving this for other. Certainly, the, the pandemic response has also now underscored some of the, the concern with the migration of populace from perhaps higher infected areas. Dr. Cushman certainly underscored the, the, the greater Toronto area and, and Toronto city itself of having infection rates of coronavirus in excess of 270 per 100,000. And we have 20 per 100,000 here in Renfrew County and District. We have an incredibly low-density population. And yet, these policies that are being put in place are envisioning us being that, that high-density urban environment. With respect to Counselor's Emo question about if we chose as a municipality to undertake an official plan amendment to perhaps increase our allocation, given that all of those numbers on our places to grow add up to 100%, I am left pretty much at the point that if I am to at the point that if I am to increase mine, it is going to be at the expense of one of yours. Uh, i.e. the province is now instituting a beggar thy neighbor policy with respect to where we're going to grow. If I seek to increase my percentage of where the growth is going to be in Renfrew County, it's probably going to be from you, uh, councillor Bennett, from you, uh, councillor Emo, from you, councillor Hunt, uh, perhaps from you, uh, Mayor Murphy, someone around me. Uh, if my growth is going to exceed my 0.6%, my less than 1% growth, it's going to be at your expense. Welcome to the brave new world. At this point, uh, let me sum up by saying this has now been approved intolerably. Again, it is an intolerable act, but it has been approved and now this is political. So I will certainly, within my community, uh, as you had underscored councillor Love, uh, the constituency office for our MPP who sits in caucus of the, uh, provincial government that absolutely, uh, I endorsed as being the, the friend to rural Ontario. And this has absolutely repudiated that they are, uh, in fact, sensitive to the needs of rural Ontario whatsoever. Uh, so I think at the very least, uh, we begin with, uh, correspondence to, uh, the Minister of Transportation, um, the Honorable John Yakubuski expressing our absolute outrage and displeasure at this intolerable, uh, prescriptive, uh, and restrictive policy towards development in rural Ontario. It is absolutely unacceptable. Having said that, I will commend just this morning, uh, that we are finally seeing, uh, 417 beginning. So if I am going to absolutely take a swing at our MPP, I think I will also acknowledge, uh, that, uh, it is timely that we are finally receiving, uh, some recognition here in Eastern Ontario. Unfortunately, it has now been re, uh, under, uh, obliterated by this act. Thank you.
All right. Councillor Donoghue, are you making a motion or a recommendation that we do send a letter to the Minister of Natural Resources, John Yakubuski?
I absolutely am, am, uh, making that, uh, but it would be certainly, uh, sorry, um, let me back up from that, uh, Madam Warden, uh, because ultimately Minister Clarke is the one responsible as the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Uh, certainly the, uh, Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry with respect to the deer yards, uh, the fire zones, natural heritage, presumably, uh, is certainly involved. Uh, I brought up, uh, Mr Yakubuski as he is the, the member for Renfrew Nipissing Pembroke, uh, that we certainly need to express our displeasure at that point, but I think it should be to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, um, to the, the Premier of Ontario and certainly to our MPP and certainly open to suggestion from any of my fellow councillors.
All right. Thank you very much for that. I saw, uh, councillor Doncaster, were you seconding that motion? All right. So it's moved by, uh, councillor Donoghue and seconded by councillor Doncaster. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Carrie, thank you very much. With that, I'm, uh, going to ask that you, uh, turn to resolutions number six in the Development and Property Report. Uh, it follows very closely, so I, I will turn it over at this time to, uh, Director Kelly, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. Uh, perhaps I'll just read the recommendation with your indulgence and, uh, Warden. The recommendation, uh, number six, and whereas the County of Renfrew adopted the updated official plan on April 25, 2018, which was subsequently partially approved with modifications by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing on March 22, 2019, and whereas the updated official plan was subsequently given final approval with modifications on March 26, 2020 by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and whereas the County of Renfrew's updated official plan is in compliance with the provincial policy statement, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to section 1719 of the Planning Act of 1990, uh, as amended, the council of the municipal corporation of the County of Renfrew requests that the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing exempt the County of Renfrew from his approval under section 17 and be added to the list of exempt municipalities under Ontario Regulation 52597. I think Mr Cheeseman gave a good background on what this exemption shall mean, uh, but the background is there for council's discussion. Thank you, Warden.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr Kelly. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Wiesniewski Moore, seconded by councillor Lynch. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing, oh, councillor Donoghue, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Warden. Uh, and I'm, I'm, uh, will beg your indulgence on this. It is not germane certainly to, to this specific and I, and I will certainly support this. But, uh, in relation to our previous item, um, I'm wondering if there is any, um, indication or, or any, any initiative towards developing a strategy of, of how we are going to address or how the County of Renfrew intends to address, uh, this odious, uh, OPA 25, um, now that it has been approved by the province. Uh, it is well and good to express our absolute rejection and displeasure with this document. Uh, however, I feel that, uh, it probably behooves us to develop a strategy and an advocacy of, of, uh, where we can, uh, perhaps make some inroads, uh, into having a more appropriate and reasonable, uh, official plan for our community.
Absolutely. And I commented earlier that, um, I'm, I'm expecting that there's going to be a significant report presented to the Development Property Committee in their June, the first June virtual meeting with that strategy recommended to the, uh, County Council. Um, I'll look towards Director Kelly to see if there's anything else that he'd like to add in that respect.
Uh, thank you, Warden, and to, and to council. So what, um, although this decision came down in, in late March, we wanted to bring it to county council first before we went out to the public with any terms of any, uh, communication. Now, Charles has mentioned, we have talked to, uh, local planning staff in your municipalities and have brought them up to speed, but we have not communicated out to the public, uh, respectfully, telling you first. So what we will develop from here on in, and, and again, we'll talk about it in June at DNP, is a bit of a news release, a strategy, and we can put our twist to, uh, the news release perhaps, voicing council's displeasure, what we've heard today. Uh, this record is now, of course, videoed in, in part of the, the common, um, commonplace, uh, messaging that we can use as well for those interested. So we will develop that strategy and communications plan moving forward with, with Charles and the staff. But again, wanted to bring it to you first before we went out to the masses to, uh, to, to, uh, express our displeasure and, and we'll start that process fairly immediately.
Well, 35 of the masses are watching.
Uh, yes, 35 fantastic fans are.
Oh, thank you very much for that, Mr Kelly. But I think we're looking for something just beyond even, uh, communicating to our residents and what we're going, it, what I'm hearing today is we're not going to sit idly by and say to the province of Ontario, thanks for doing this to us. Uh, we are going to continue to fight and we'll have to have a strategy in place to, to lobby and advocate for our position.
Understood, Warden. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to turn it back to, uh, Mr Kelly. We do have, um, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, councillor Lynch, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It's just a comment back to Craig, when you, uh, and other comments from councillors. It's all well and said that we're the county, we're going to send a letter off to the people. It's the grassroots resident that's going to pay the price for this thing. I'm not big, uh, on petitions, but if, if I'm a politician and I get a petition with, uh, you know, the 4,000 people, or I should say, 15,000 people from Armpire saying, wait a minute, what do you mean I can't build on my sand dune which is next to the river? Excuse me, you're not going to have my support next year. It's all well and, well, you know, like I said, there's 19 of us here, but when you got 15,000 guys on the list, someone's going to take notice. Thank you.
Councillor Wiesniewski Moore. Could you turn on your microphone, please?
Again, I apologize. Um, do you need a motion, Madam Warden, to, uh, for that recommendation or am I jumping the gun?
Well, I believe that staff have received direction today to be preparing a report for DNP in June. I'm getting to see Mr Kelly shaking his head, so I think that's definitely going to happen.
You don't need, sorry, Madam Warden, you don't need a motion then for requesting the exemption, so that'll be going next?
Oh, no, that's, I'm sorry. Yes, that's what we do. Oh, that's what you're looking for.
That's what I'm prepared to do. I apologize.
All right. So you're making the, okay, you're making the motion for that. All right. I need a seconder, please. Councillor Murphy. Any further discussion on the resolution? Councillor Murphy.
Sorry about that, Madam Warden. I was just going to vote.
All right. Seeing none, all in favor. Carrie, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over, back over to Mr Kelly, please.